For the City of Springdale for August 20, 2025. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and please remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we begin this meeting, let us bring to mind the start of the new school year in our community in appreciation for all the teachers, support staff, and administrators who help shape our children's lives. We remember through our own service to the community that our words, our decisions, and our actions directly impact so many others as we conduct the work of the city. In this spirit, let us incline our ears to reason, apply our hearts to understanding, and seek knowledge we can use to find common ground among the residents for the betterment of our community. Thank you. Ms. Brown, if you take roll.
Mr. Gleves.
Present.
Mr. Jacobs.
Present.
Farland.
Present.
Mrs. Sullivan-Waiskopf.
Present.
Mr. Vanover.
Present.
Mrs. Webster.
Present.
Mr. Anderson.
Present. Councilor New Package, you received the minutes from our July 2, 2025 meeting. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions, discussion, or changes?
Yes.
All right, see none. All those in favor of approving the minutes as published signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? The minutes are approved with seven affirmative votes. All right, moving right along, we have next up, we have committee and official reports. We'll start off with Civil Service Commission, Mr. Coleman.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. The Springdale Civil Service Commission did meet on August 7 in the municipal building, and members present was myself and Mr. James Dunning, Mrs. Kathy McNair is out of town at this point, and we were aware, so it wasn't a problem. Following the disposition of the minutes from the June 5 meeting, as well as a special meeting on July 17, the minutes were approved as presented. So following the approval of the minutes, there was a special meeting that took place on July 17, and the purpose behind the special meeting was held to review and to subsequently approve the reinstatement of fire department employee Blake Betzler. Following the discussion, which did in fact include Chief Stanley, this particular request was approved. There was additional information indicating that the candidate for reinstatement had not been gone very long, and therefore was not necessarily to review a probationary period at this time. So again, we did in fact approve the reinstatement of the firefighter with the approval also of Chief Stanley. Following that meeting, there was additional discussion regarding a timeline for the finance account clerk two position. This was an internal posting as there are candidates available for this particular position, and therefore was not reasonable to post it externally. So a motion was made to approve the timeline for this particular position, and that motion was approved as well. And there was an additional timeline presented to the commission for the vacancy in the Public Works Department, and this vacancy was an external posting and was due primarily to, again, the exit of an individual in that department. So following the discussion, the motion to approve the posting for the Public Works Maintenance Worker Position was in fact approved as well. And that completes my report unless there's a question.
I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Coleman.
You're welcome.
All right, next up, we have Rules and Law, Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
Finance Committee, Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
Planning Commission, Ms. Sullivan-Waiskopf.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning Commission met in these chambers on August 12, and we had an old business of the tax amendments, an ordinance amending 150 3.252 F6D of the Springdale Code of Ordinances, regulating the keeping of bees on residential properties. If you remember last month when we were here, the Committee for Urban Farming said that they had made the tweaks to what they had sent over to planning and that it was being sent again, and they did. And after reviewing that, it passed with a seven to zero vote. We had a new development, assault brine tanks at Public Works at 335 Northland Boulevard. And this had already been granted accessory structures through BZA previously, and the tanks were going to be on asphalt, so we had approved that seven to zero. And then we had a minor modification to Cassinelli Square Planned Unit Development, 11700 Princeton Pike. It used to be Zip's Car Wash, it is now Flying Aces, and they had asked to put a booth that will be manned by an individual in the drive-through of the car wash. And after much discussion, that was approved, seven to zero. We had a Tri-County Mall Planned Unit Development at 11700 Princeton Pike, and the Tri-County Mall, and the two members of council found it to be a major change. So since it was a major change, there needs to be a public hearing on it. So we went ahead and tabled, we continued it till September so that we can advertise and have the public hearing. And so the public hearing for the Tri-County Mall Planned Unit Development modification will be heard in September. That is everything I have, unless anybody has any questions, or if Ms. McFarland has anything else to add.
I do, I just have one question on the Tri-County Mall, the PUD and the advertisement there. So did the applicant indicate concerns about their timeline or schedule? Do we need to look at having special meetings to keep it moving, or are they comfortable with the schedule we have? And Mr. Yule might have some ideas there as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. No, we have not received any update from them requesting anything to get moved up, but I'll follow up with them before next meeting.
Please, because I know if it's September there, and then it would need to come to council after that, you're pushing into October, November, and at one point, the last information we had is they were looking to start doing demolition, and this was a prerequisite. It may not be anymore, but I just want to reaffirm that at least everything I'm hearing from council is if we need to have special meetings to keep that moving, we're certainly available for that as well. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to be clear, and I know they were quoted in a newspaper article or TV, there's nothing with regard to the demise of this property into these three prospective lots that has anything that prevents anybody from demoing the mall. Those things are not, those are non-consecutors. So if somebody needs money, that's a different problem, it's a different issue, but the splitting of the lots does not prevent anybody from demoing. They can demo tomorrow if they want to. It's a fiscal issue, I think.
That's really good information to share. Thank you for clearing that up. And the PUD change wouldn't affect the final development plan being submitted either. As I understand it, we still do not have a final development plan, and that's probably a bigger barrier to moving forward, not necessarily for demo, but for construction.
That's correct. They did not have a final development plan.
All right, well, we stand ready to help whatever we can do. All right, anything else for planning? All right, thank you for that report. Next, we'll move to the Board of Zoning Appeals, Mr. Gleves.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have no report.
Board of Health, Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
Cap on improvements, Ms. Sullivan-Waiskopf.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
Next up is OKI, that's me. OKI still hasn't met since our last meeting. Our next meeting is supposed to begin in next month, when we resume from OKI summer schedule. All right, next up, we have the mayor's report, Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's been a while, so I have a few things to touch on. We hosted the Hamilton County Commissioners here on August 14. The chamber was packed, they were gracious and complimentary of our building and the recent renovations. They also, we also had the opportunity to thank them for the grant dollars they gave us with regard to Pretzel Fest, and they also let us know that instead of it just being a first-time event, that it can be a recurring thing. So that's a big positive. There was a grand opening for Boost Mobile on Springfield Pike, they had food truck, radio station there, it was a nice event. There was a ribbon cutting for the grand opening for Mr. Hayek's Fish and Chicken on August 3 at 11482 Springfield Pike. Again, nice event, music, owner was thanking the community and several individuals that helped him get open. This was a business that was on the verge of opening, and then there was some vandalism that took place. There were several businesses that came to help him out, including one called All the Work for Me, discounted and donated materials from Sam's and Lowe's. So that kind of supports, great to see in the community helping one another out, and the food's good, too. We had a ribbon cutting for Flying Aces Car Wash next to the old Friday's Restaurant on 747. They were giving away free car washes for a time being. They also allowed us to tour the facility and see how high-tech it is. They spent $1.6 million renovating that car wash from the prior owner. This just in today, on an email I got, the highly anticipated, long-awaited ribbon cutting for Wawa should be on October 16 at 8:00 a.m. So subject to there being some other issue, that's what they just sent out an email today. So you can put that down. August 10, so we had a couple of back-to-school celebrations and bashes. There's a back-to-school bash on August 10, put on by Luxurious Style Salon here in the town center on Springfield Pike. They had a DJ, free haircuts, gave it away backpacks, free food, Gold Star donated hot dogs and buns, giving away shoes, and the Princeton Reading Bus was there as well. There was also on August 12, Springdale Elementary School had their Meet the Teachers Night, and they also had a back-to-school bash put on by Compass Church, and our police department contributed with regard to filling backpacks and school supplies to children, and that's something our department's been doing for a while. Our department contributed no less than 50 backpacks, about 350 backpacks. So really great opportunity for kids to have new school supplies and what they need to get going for school. We have the Junior Olympics on August 16, opportunity for kids to come out and compete a little bit. We had the Gold Fist Grab on August 9, four big winners that captured Springdale as well as swim and safe fishes, and they all got these cool little treasure chests filled with candy. I tried to get one myself, but they would not let me get one. And last but not least, we had Pretzel Fest on August 2. It was outstanding. Taking a moment again to thank all of our city staff for all the work they put in, our Parks and Rec Department, and Charlie Wilson worked and prepared a long time to bring this idea to life and executed flawlessly. Public Works helped in terms of getting the rest of the city cleaned up and ready to go. Building Department was making sure that the tents passed inspection. Health Department got there to make sure that food trucks were certified and inspected. Economic Development Director fostered relationships that helped us with regard to sponsorships. The administration, as always, helps make sure all the dots were connected. Mr. Yule was out there, on the field the Friday beforehand, making sure that the folks were getting the lights up, and he said, "I don't care if you stay till 5:00 in the morning, you're going to have these lights fixed, ready for this event." And really want to thank, of course, DHUSA and their CEO President Thorsten Schroeder and Alley, both hands-on dishing out pretzels all day, and, you know, for free. I don't know if folks understand, all those pretzels were donated for free so that those funds could go to helping our youth boosters, and that was an awesome thing. And then in closing, you know, sitting and watching the drone show was a little bit emotional. I'm not saying I cried, but it was a little bit emotional when you see how that event took off and everybody's efforts and putting through there, and folks coming together as a community really, really was an opportunity. I was proud of all of our residents coming out to participate in the event, proud of all of our city staff, and really proud of the entity that is the City of Springdale, and everybody did a great job. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan-Waiskopf.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to say that when I was at the Pretzel Fest, I was sitting up on the hill, and when the children's area, the inflatables, went away, the coolest thing that I'd ever seen in the, the young children started playing with the police officers. They were playing catch, they were playing football, they were playing tag, and I remember looking down thinking, other communities' police are arresting young children and teenagers at their events, and ours are playing tag and playing catch, and that was the coolest thing that I had ever witnessed, was the partnership with the police and the community, and especially with the kids. It was a very, very good thing to watch. Thank you.
Thank you, and just to add to that, it really was a wonderful event, and we know there was a lot of work. I had heard that 18 months of planning went into that event, and there was a lot going on. One of the coolest comments that I received, I'd shared with you previously, was one resident came up and shared that they were just spending time with somebody that they'd lived in the same city, Springdale, with them since they went to grade school together, but they hadn't seen each other since then, and they reconnected on the field at Pretzel Fest, which I thought was, that was impressive. We've had events, and a lot of people get out there and do that, but this kind of restarted that community feeling, and there was a real feel there. I mean, we had beautiful weather, the food was great, the food trucks were great, everything was set up, the concerts were fun, but just having that opportunity for people to come out was really special. So thank you again for doing that. All right, next we'll move on to the administrator's report, Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to kind of ride the coattails of Pretzel Fest, it was an outstanding event. All the employees really enjoyed being a part of it as well, and those employees who didn't have to work it, there was many employees who came with their families to enjoy it. So it was a very fun, enjoyable event, and we had a debrief last week and talked about how to make it bigger and better for next year. So if you do have any input, please send it our way as well, and we'll make sure we get those suggestions into the, into the planning process for next year. Also, as you well have, or all have seen, the renovations are about 98% complete, so we do appreciate your patience and do appreciate you extending the meeting time from July 2 to now. That really allowed us to get everything done and coordination of contractors and whatnot. So a few punch list items still remain. We do have some companion seating for ADA coming to add to the back row of our council chambers here, and hopefully sometime in October, those will get installed. So, thank you.
All right, next we'll move on to the law director's report, Mr. Braun.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
Next, engineer's report, Mr. Riggs.
Thank you, just a few brief updates. So the Northland Boulevard project, I'm sure you noticed, is really starting to take shape. The curb has been recently installed on the eastbound lanes. The contractors, my understanding that the contractor's looking to even put asphalt face down in the next week or so, and try to get everything open, both eastbound and westbound lanes, open before the end of the year. Now, I'm not saying that the project's going to be complete, the completion date's still of, I think, August of next year, but they're trying to get that completed before the weather turns on us and just leave again for the winter and then come back in the spring and wrap everything up. The next project is East Kemper Road Improvements Phase 1. We're wrapping up 60% plans, hopefully by the end of, actually, end of next week, and we're going to submit those back out to the utilities and other agencies to get review comments, but we're on track to get that bid out later this fall. Then, East Kemper-Northland Intersection Realignment and Kemper Road Shared Use Path, basically the Phase 2 of the current construction project. We've been wrapping up utility coordination, we wrapped up the public engagement piece, we had 15 survey responses, which isn't a lot, but there was some valuable comments received from that. And taking that information, we're wrapping up the feasibility study, and that's the study that basically goes through the design criteria and our rationale to come up with what we're proposing. That's all going to be submitted to ODOT by the end of this week. I have a draft like 95% ready to go out tomorrow, by tomorrow. So we also have the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project. That project was advertised for construction on July 24. The build opening was held on August 14, and we received four bids. Huesack paving and excavating was the low bid, for a price of $582,338, which was under the engineer's estimate of $634,529, and that is going to be considered forward this evening. And that's all I have.
Don't see any questions. Thank you, Mr. Riggs. All right, next up, we have the Reno Program Committee, Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Reno Committee met on July 29. We discussed some potential legislation, but it, after discussion, it, we tabled it, and we're looking at a couple months of analyzing some data and sightings that are coming in. So we plan to get back together in early October and take it from there, and that would conclude my report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Vanover. Next, we have the Urban Farming Special Committee, Ms. McFarland.
Thank you, Mr. President, no report.
All right, and then finally, we have our new zoning code revision committee, Mr. Gleves.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dave Oakham, who represents the Planning Commission, is on vacation right now. Michelle Gilmore, who represents the BZA, is taking her daughter back to college, and Melissa Hayes, the Building Department Representative. I will be speaking with her in our upcoming meeting this Tuesday about getting things together to move this forward. Also spoke briefly with Mr. Yule, Ms. Morgan, about starting this. As soon as we get all our boots on the ground, we'll be ready to go. So that's all I have. Is there any questions?
Do we expect to have the first meeting before our next committee reports next month?
Yeah, we're going to try our best.
Okay. All right, don't see any other questions. Thank you. All right, that concludes committee and official reports. Next, we'll move on to communications. Ms. Brown, are there any communications?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We do have two transfer liquor permits that the city has received. One is for the Maple Knoll Communities, and one is for the Quick Trip, which is the Rite Aid. And those two, no objections from our police department, unless anything needs added by Mr. Yule, we'll get those filed.
Counsel, again, on these liquor transfers, we don't typically have a vote, but if you have questions or objections, this would be your opportunity to speak to those. All right, I don't see any. We go and get those filed, thank you. All right, next we'll move on to communications from the audience. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that would like to address counsel for any reason. Simply need to come forward to the podium, state your name and address, and you could have up to five minutes to address counsel. At this point, the floor is open for communications from the audience.
Hi, my name is Rae Haratsuka. My address is 211 West Kemper Road. I'm speaking in an unofficial capacity about this, but I just wanted to mention that the Hamilton County Military and Veteran Appreciation Day is this Saturday, is from 2 to 9, or 2 to 10, I can't remember exactly. Veterans get free parking, free food. It is open to the public, though, so everybody's invited. So that's all I wanted to say.
And where was this event?
So your point. Thank you for asking.
Got it.
So please, spread the word. We want as much attendance, especially all the veterans in Springdale to come, well, and military personnel, everyone else that's serving, too.
All right. Floor, so if anyone else would like to address counsel for any reason? Second call? Third and final call? All right, at this point, I'm closing communications in the audience, and we'll move on to ordinances and resolution. First up, we have ordinance number 292025. This is, this does have the emergency clause, though it is a second reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 292025, an ordinance amending Section 73.03 of the Springdale Code of Ordinances, regulating parking and declaring an emergency. Whereas the City of Springdale, Ohio, council has previously adopted certain regulations to govern parking within the City of Springdale, and whereas council seeks to revise Section 73.03 to address parking on non-permeable surfaces and overnight parking in municipal parking lots. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, Section 73.03 of the Springdale Code of Ordinances shall be amended in relevant part as indicated in the attached Exhibit A, which is incorporated herein by reference. Section 2, that this council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this ordinance were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and of its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, that this ordinance shall be effective from and after the earliest period allowed by law. Section 4, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare, and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the Charter, be effective immediately. The reason for said declaration of emergency is to enact and adopt the amendments at the earliest possible date for the immediate implementation and enforcement of the updated parking regulations to address current public safety concerns and enforcement inefficiencies.
Counsel, you've heard the reading, the second reading of ordinance number 292025. It does have the emergency clause. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess, Mr. Yule, are we going to be posting signs on the corners? Because this talks about, you know, staying, you know, distance from the corner, that is, are there going to be new signs going on those, or?
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't anticipate any new signs, but we'll coordinate with the police department and Public Works. If there aren't signs already out there that will identify these areas, we'll put new signs up. But I don't anticipate any new signs, but we'll double-check to make sure something's not warranted.
Other questions? I do want to say that I appreciate Mayor Hawkins bringing this forward. This was something that we had talked about a little bit in our Reno Program Committee, and even Ms. Webster had brought up in our last meeting that this is an ongoing problem. So bringing the police department in to help policing this, I think is a good move forward and some real action, so I appreciate that. Mr. Vanover.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I too would, this is one that we had discussed, and I'm strongly in favor of it, and it allows some crossover, because a lot of this violations, parking in the yard, and that happen when the Building Department is not here, and it's frustrating. I get calls, I get texts, I get photos sent in, so this is highly welcomed.
And for those interested, this doesn't change the reporting request for any residents that have this issue. If they see people violating this, it's simply, it's still, if the police aren't everywhere all the time, and like we said in the last meeting, if you see something, say something. You can call the police, not emergency line, or you can contact administration if it's an ongoing issue. But again, I appreciate it being moved forward. Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you. Just one other thing to piggyback on. So everybody knows, we, you know, our Building Department does an outstanding job, and they're also creative in how they do it. So we do have inspectors that will work on the weekends sometimes, just for that, so if someone's going, oh, well, it's the weekend, there's nobody around. But again, it's, you got one or two people that are out, they're not going to see everything. So if you see something, call in, and we'll address it.
All right, seeing other questions. Ms. Brown, if you poll counsel.
Mr. Vanover.
Aye.
Mrs. Sullivan-Waiskopf.
Aye.
Mr. Gleves.
Aye.
Mrs. Webster.
Aye.
Ms. McFarland.
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Aye. Ordinance number 292025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, moving on, next we have ordinance number 302025. This is a first reading, and we will have a presentation after the reading. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 302025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with a regional council of governments for the purpose of administration and collection of municipal earnings tax in the City of Springdale, Ohio. Whereas the City of Springdale, Ohio, the city operates a tax department for the purpose of collection and administration of an earnings tax levying in accordance with Chapter 94 of the Springdale Code of Ordinances. And whereas the city desires to partner with an outside agency to administer the tax ordinances of the city and to act as its agent in the collection of taxes. And whereas a regional council of governments was created pursuant to Chapter 167 of the Ohio Revised Code to foster cooperation between municipalities. And whereas the creation of the regional council of governments was primarily to establish a central collection facility known as the Regional Income Tax Agency, RITA, for the purchase of, for the purpose of administering the earnings tax laws of the various participating members. And whereas the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, the council finds it to be in the best interest of the city to join the regional council of governments for the purpose of having RITA administer the city's tax ordinances. Now therefore be it ordained by the Council of the City of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the mayor and city administrator are hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with a regional council of governments for the purpose of administration and collection of municipal earnings tax in the City of Springdale, Ohio, through the Regional Income Tax Agency, the agreement. Section 2, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby appointed as the city's representative to the regional council of governments, and the assistant city administrator is hereby designated as the alternate, as required by the agreement. Section 3, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council, and that all deliberations of this council, and of its committees, if any, which resulted in taking in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 4- Section 4, that this ordinance will take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Counsel, this was the first reading of ordinance number 302025. At this point, I invite the representative from the RITA, I believe, is here. If you wanted to come forward to the podium and share the presentation with counsel. And then after the presentation, there'll be an opportunity for counsel to ask questions or do our normal deliberation before we conclude this item. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Hawkins, council members, and administration, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to present RITA to you and the services that we offer. My name is Angela Vize. I currently live over in Greentownship. I moved back to the area almost four years ago. I'm originally from Northern Kentucky. I was born at what used to be St. Luke's. Yes, I'm dating myself. I moved away after high school, traveled a little bit, and now I'm back for good to be with my family. I do work from home. The unfortunate incident with COVID allowed for us to work from home. At that time, we did not have representation down in the southwest area, which is currently, I am the liaison for that area. So with my past living in the area, and then my desire to come back to my family, the organization was on board getting, getting a representation down here for you. So I am always available. I mainly, like I said, I work from home, but I do go outside to our municipalities, council meetings and whatnot. So I am available for questions. I live about 20 minutes from here, so, okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. Oh, went the wrong way. So I will not go over each, sorry, every one of these slides. There are quite a few. I did send Brian the information prior, and I do see that you guys had printouts of it. But at any time, if you have any questions about a slide, just let me know. Okay. So this here is just for understanding your tax needs, and these are just the things that we do. We help to maximize your tax collection with local services. We try with our data information to simplify filing and payment processing. Everything we do can be done online. We offer multiple vessels for this. And then we also have, we have your goals in mind. We do represent you at any of the state and federal legislation committees. And RITA is a full-service, comprehensive approach to local taxes, everything from registration to legal, everything in between. And our collections do historically result in increases in revenue and reduction in cost to our municipalities. So of course, our mission is always to provide quality, cost-effective service to all of our member municipalities. We are the largest municipal income tax administrator in Ohio. We do serve over 80, we serve 83 of the 88 counties in Ohio. There is one county that, right now, I shouldn't, I will not say never, I believe it is Benton County. They do not have any municipality as far as a village or a city that actually has a local income tax. All the other counties do. And we do process approximately $2.4 billion overall in tax collections for the 2024 year. And some of our services do include, for your committee, we do, like I said, over 50% of the municipal taxes. We process, again, we are a full-service tax collection for registration. We do have enhanced websites with e-filing capabilities. I know a lot of our municipalities, their taxpayers, they, you know, prefer to do a lot of online things. And then me, I prefer, still, I'm a hands-on person, so. And we do have our call center, which is available Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00. During our filing season, we do extend that out, those hours, I believe it's from 7:00 to 7:00, Monday through Friday, and then we are open from 12, I'm sorry, from 8:00 to 12:00 on Saturdays. Our Regional Council of Government is comprised of, it's a member partnership. So all of our board members, which are nine, they are someone that is within a municipality. Any of our members can run for a board position. So it, they do have votes. It's a three-year stagger term. So there's always, each year, there is some type of voting going on at our Regional Council of Government meetings. So our members do have a say in what goes on. Each municipality, whether it's our smallest one, which is Okta, and I do believe they have a, a population of about 60 people, up to our largest, which is between Springfield and Youngstown now, which is, I believe they're close to 60,000 residents. Each one does have one vote. So everyone has the say. Again, this is a partnership. This is something that we work with our municipalities on. We are a nonprofit, so everything is shared across the board as far as, as far as costs. And then, of course, you have what we call your distributions. These are just a few of the communities that are, that partner with RITA, that are in your area. Montgomery's not shown because it was way off, and it wouldn't allow me. But we do have, you know, numerous other ones that are down in this area. For my municipalities, I have approximately 65 that are down here in the southwest area. So when you partner with RITA, and this is for our member municipalities, your, your tax department, your admin, portions of your administration that have only something to do with taxes, they will have access to real-time taxpayer data. So whatever I see in our system for Springdale, that is what your tax department would see as well. So they will have access, just as they do now, to see payments that have been made on an account. They'll have access to see filings that your taxpayers have made. With us, again, it is a partnership, so you can have as little hands-on or as hands-off as you want to be. So that is really up to each municipality. We have some municipalities who shut their doors and wanted RITA to take over everything because they wanted to focus on others. And then we have other municipalities that actually do have staff onboard. Montgomery, Fairborn, Springfield, they still offer walk-in assistance. So again, that's, that's, you know, something that is decided amongst your municipality. Again, these just go over, you know, all of our tax collection services. We have our individual and business customer service. Even though we're open specific times during the day, we do have a 24/7 IVR system. So your taxpayers can call in 24/7. They'll, of course, get the recorded line. It'll give them prompts. They can make payments over the phone. They can ask, you know, ask questions, and somebody will return their call. And then we have secure messaging, which is with our auditors and whatnot. And with this, if they create a My Account, the taxpayers can actually go online. They can send a secure email, and that's entered within 24 to 48 hours. So again, for those who do everything technical and really do not want to go through the, the phone lines itself, everything can be handled that way. And then the Member Services Department, which is what I'm part of, again, we have, I always try to remember, we have six GLs, our government liaisons, and then we have two, we're hiring another, a third support person. So we are what is what your administration has access to. If, you know, Brian, Stephanie, if they have questions, need information, then our line is what they would call, we're, we're the customer service for, for the administration. We do provide training and access to the system for those that are authorized for it, so who actually have a need and work with it every day. So we do provide training for that. I come onsite, sit down, and go over everything with them. With our softwares, we do have our, you know, our tax system, there's access to that. We do have a secure email, which is given to the municipality, to the administrators. That's how we go back, that's how we communicate with each other about taxpayer information. So if Mr. President was to send me an email and it had your information, whether it's just your four digits of your social security number, and you send it through the city's email, our systems block that. We have to actually go in, take a look to see what it is. If it's taxpayer information, we delete it. I send an email. I cannot receive that because of that information. Once a secure email's set up with the tax administration, then that's how we go back and forth with taxpayer information. It's through that secure email, which they have to, and it's the same way with me when I log onto my computer. We have VPN that we have to log into through that. Again, we do collections. We have our compliance department. Sorry, I hate saying that word, but I do it a lot. We do have our federal taxable information, our FTI department. So this is an IRS data exchange. We have a specific apartment, or department, that's a handful of auditors. They are screened. It's my understanding, pretty much the same way the Secret Service is, because the information that they get access to is anyone who files a federal return. They have to have a reason given, of course, for that, but they do have access to that information. So it's very secure. They're in a room that's locked, and you have to have a special key requirement to get in. Our FTI runs all year long. This is not, there is no additional cost to our members for this. It is included in the cost of collections. In 2024, we collected just from our FTI department over $23 million for our municipalities. And then we do offer our legal program. There is a, a cost to the legal program, however, at the, at the end, it's put back on the taxpayer. So everything's, we'll go back into like the court costs and whatnot. Started partnering with the AGO as far as collections, so we are working with them as well. And then this is how we protect confidential information, because that is a top priority. Again, I work from home, however, I'm not allowed to have a printer. So I cannot print anything, which is why, you know, it was taken care of for me. So they're very, again, focused on that. We do have our SOC agreement, which is provided to our member municipalities once a year after it's done. We all receive the wonderful annual security awareness training, and that is in-depth, because it can take most of my day to go through each of the slides. All taxpayer data, of course, is considered confidential under the ORC. Our customer service agents, if you were to call in and talk to them as a taxpayer, and you're calling in for your wife, let's say you're, you do not file together, because with local income tax, you do not need, you don't have to. We would need to have your wife say into the phone, so we could hear her, that she approves of you looking at her account. So they do make sure that they are verifying last four digits, and before they give any type of information out over the phone. And again, only authorized employees for the city would have access to any type of taxpayer information. And again, there's our SOC, so it does have our controls on it. We do have an annual disaster recovery test, which I believe that is once a year. And then we do internal and external penetration tests that are performed every year by a third And one of the things I can, I can talk to about the disaster recovery is actually when COVID did hit, I mean, it was March 13th, the day they shut everything down. I was actually off that day, and my coworker Natalie, she called me up and said, on Monday, you need to come in, get your laptop, we're working from home. So starting that following Monday, all of our employees, except for our FTI department, started working from home. By the end of that first week, we were 90% up and running, still providing distributions, collections, and whatnot for our members. And again, this is just things that we're recognized in for our achievements and the things that we do. This is the municipalities. We had new members in 2024, and then 2025 to date. Right now, I am working on a conversion with Germantown. New Lebanon is set to go October 1st. And then I've started my conversion meetings with Trenton as well. We also provide member toolkits for our municipalities, and this is to help spread the word about the taxing to your taxpayers. You can put this on your websites, on your social media platform, however you get with your, or your taxpayers. Again, this is all part of our member toolkit. There's links to click on. Your, your taxpayers can go online. What is something new right now is, let's see if I can do this. She said it was the top one? Okay, let's see. Ah, there we go. Okay. So this is what our newest thing is for the new taxpayers and new businesses, for our new members. So that's a link that's on our website. It can be clicked on, and it takes the taxpayer or the business, it takes them to more information that helps guide them along with income taxes, what they're, what they should be doing, non-filing and whatnot. So we have a lot of new things that's going on, and that's one of the things that we are, we are loving about it. Again, we provide all of these resources to our members. And again, there's more. And then our online resources for taxpayers. So again, if they visit RITA, Ohio, under the RITA My Account, they can file returns, they can file current, and prior, file exemptions if they do not have a filing requirement. They can also, on their account, your taxpayers, they can view their filing history, they can make amendments to their estimates, they can create an estimate and make payments. So there's a lot of things that they can do. With that, they do need to create an account so that it's linked into their social security. Our Fast File, with that, they do not have to create an account, they do not have to create a login. Go in, they put in their information, and it takes them straight to where they just enter all their information and file. With that, they cannot see if they have any prior payments. They cannot, like, see their previous history with that, because again, there's not an account to link it to. So this is for those who have, like, just real quick filings, you can do it on your phone. It's real simple, easy to do. Same way with Fast Pay, no login or passwords required. They can go online, and they can make a payment. And then we have our Quick Tax Calc, which we started that last year. So it'll help calculate what the taxpayer may owe for their taxes in advance. And then, of course, we have additional resources. It's not required that your taxpayers file electronically. We do still have fillable PDF forms and manual forms for those that prefer to do that. Okay. And then here are our resources for taxpayers. Again, we have our, our customer service that they can access during the week, but we also have recordings and whatnot for agents. The one thing that's really great about our customer service is if everything's recorded when a taxpayer calls in. So once they call in, they'll put in their social security number, their account's pulled up. So when the auditor answers the phone, they already have that information, and that's when they start verifying that it is the taxpayer. And the reason those are recorded is for training purposes, and also if there's some type of dispute, mainly it's for training purposes, but the dispute would be, and I do get that, I'll have, you know, Stephanie could email me and say, hey, you know, taxpayer A, you know, they called, they're real upset, they said they talked to this person, and they were very rude, they didn't know what they were doing. We can actually pull that phone conversation, so we can see what happened, and if it was, you know, something like that, then that's used for training purposes, you know, to help with that. A lot of times, just more of a, nobody wants to pay taxes, so they're always upset, but, or not always upset, but they can get upset. So we do look at that. They actually pull those, a handful of those each day, just to spot check to see how the auditor, how an auditor's doing. And then at the end of every call, they can complete a survey on their experience, and they are reviewed. And this is some of the feedback that we've gotten from our customers. 92.3% have been satisfied, very satisfied with the knowledge, the satisfaction with the agent, 92%, and if they were courteous. So this is the statistics they pulled for periodated January through December of 2024. So this is the statistics they pulled for periodated January through December of 2024. Change that. Okay, so why partner with Rita? We believe that your local businesses and residents will benefit with simplified filing and payment through our website and then our partnership with tax softwares. So our MEF does partner with Drake. The only large one that we are not in partnership with, and I can't, I have to start writing this down, because I can never remember which one it is. But it is one that we're not. And the reason for that is because their systems aren't secure enough for ours. Not that they're not secure, it's just that we have so many things going on. We expect, you know, tight, tight, tight securities going on, and I will think of the name in a moment. So we do, you know, we do partner with them. We do believe that we can reduce costs with the shared resources from our other municipalities. And then, of course, we, again, we have all of our electronic filing, modernized the e-file, and then Mye account. And we have experienced that there has been, seen an increase in collections for our member municipalities, again, as well as reduced cost. So this is what everyone likes to see, right? Our finance people. So the estimate that we created, it was based on what we call our Rita worksheet, estimate worksheet. So it was filled out for us based on your prior collections for the year. We use that, and it's in comparison with a handful of municipalities that have the same like tax rate, population, collections for each of your compartments, your net profits you're withholding in your individual. So we do separate it out. Once we get that comparison, then we do our little calculations. And what we're estimating for the estimated cost of collections is between $208,000 to $230,000 a year. What that percentage breaks down to is 1.10%, approximately 1.20% of your collections. And this is based on the tax collections of almost $19 million for Springdale. Next steps, the council would pass a joining legislation. Your current software provider would need to be notified of the transition for that. We will extend the contract. And then they, the contract does go before our regional council of governments for their monthly meeting, and that's to be approved and voted on. And then depending on when you would like to start, the conversion process will begin. I did provide a timeline of January 1st. But if, if not January 1st, we prefer to do mid conversions. So it would be, it would be deferred until July 1st. And then that's half a year. Questions?
Probably a couple. But while you're still on the timeline, when you say January 1st, does that mean that if we followed this happy path and went down this road, that the 2026 filing would happen through Rita? Or would that, would the transition happen? It wouldn't be until second or third quarter that people would start using the system instead?
No, if we began a January 1st, 2026, that would mean beginning December 31st of 2025 would be the last day that your, your tax department would enter any type of information, beginning January 1. All of your business and your taxpayers would feed through Rita.
Okay, so it'd feed through, starting that date? That's not the start of the migration?
Correct, yes. No, the conversion itself would begin as soon as, as soon as possible. Once we get all the, get joining legislations, we can start everything with that.
Got it. Mr. Jacobs?
Thank you, Mr. President. It's a great presentation. I was glad we could see the slides beforehand. I did, I reached out to one of your newer communities, and they had great things to say about you. I don't want any questions for you. I got a question for administration. If council were to approve this, we don't have any idea what the anticipated scope of the service would be. It sounds like they could provide different levels of service. And so I would need to know what this does to our staff, and not just staff, but positions in the short and the medium and the long term, before I could really even, you know, come to a conclusion on this.
Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. So it's important. We've, we've had these discussions. Mr. Yule and Ms. Morgan have met with our tax and finance department going back several months and having discussions about what Rita would look like and what that would look like in terms of their jobs and tasks. Nobody will be terminated, fired, or relieved of their duties. There's not going to be any kind of reduction of staff that we have currently. Right now, we're down two staff members that we have not replaced. That's not including somebody serving as the head of the tax finance department, but two actual account clerks. If we're going through with Rita, it saves us from filling those positions. And so you guys got a little sheet that breaks down what the costs look like for those employees. The, the big thing that we get out of Rita is, and taking a step back, we'll still have a tax department. We will still have staff during tax season and not during tax season that will be there to answer questions, that you can come in and file there, and they'll input the information through Rita. So nothing's going to look different for our residents in terms of anything being taken away. They're going to get something with their having Rita. They can go and file online, all those things on their own if they want to. But in terms of service, we're going to have service here, just like we always have. There, there was not going to be a difference with regard to that. In terms of staff, we're not getting rid of any staff. Now, when you're, the big things that we're looking at administratively that are a plus for the city, in addition to what Rita's providing in terms of the online service, it's an additional opportunity for residents, is the opportunity to collect taxes in a way. They have an opportunity and an ability to, I don't want to say claw, but go get resources that we otherwise cannot track down and get. And so that's a big deal. We've talked about if someone's in the state of Ohio, we'll get some access with regard to their Ohio filings. If they're outside the state of Ohio, we're kind of on the short end of that. Rita can go and track that down and get those dollars. So that's why when you're looking at the cost benefit analysis of everything, when you're looking at the difference of what the cost of those two employees would be, what the cost is with regard to Rita, and what we could estimate go and get in terms of dollars that we're not getting, you know, we're to the positive $600-plus thousand. So if it's like $200-some thousand in terms of having that personnel staff, that's what the cost is about for having Rita. But there's an estimate that we may be able to go clawback around $750,000 with regard to taxes that we can't get our hands on right now. It more than offsets that we're getting more revenue back into the city for those dollars. So that's the thought process. But our, our staff has been engaged. Mr. Yule and Ms. Morgan have been absolutely fantastic on top of it. And obviously, the first thing the staff thinks about if they hear this kind of thing is like, you're getting rid of everybody. They've been assured over and over again, that's not the case.
Thank you.
I don't know if there's anything else?
Mr. Yule, did you want to add anything to that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, yeah, just a couple of things. We, you know, we started these conversations about a year ago and with Rita and Angela to more or less explore what this would look like, what this partnership could be. A lot of the feedback that we've heard through the tax department is, you know, "I'd like to do online payments. I'd like to do online filing." So we looked at, how do we enhance our services? And once we started looking at our current software provider, we can do a lot of those functions, but we have to pay additional for them. One of the other challenges that we have within the tax department is it seems like we're always replacing at least one, sometimes two, tax account clerks every year. When I've talked to other city managers around, that tends to be their, one of their, their challenges, as well as maintaining people within their tax department. So it's difficult to get those people and retain those people. With a tax department our size as well, it's difficult, because there's not a lot of advancement opportunity either. So I think some people see that and maybe don't apply, or maybe that's why their stint here is short-served. But nonetheless, we looked at this as an enhancement of services on how we can provide more efficient services for our residents and our taxpayers, you know, looking at providing those means to their requests through online filing, online payments, and whatnot, kind of minimizing some of the, the backup that occurs here in the lobby during tax season. But if no one were any the wiser about any of these discussions, and they still come in and they ask us to complete their taxes for the, for the city for us, we can still do that. We will still have the staff. It's just instead of logging into the system that we currently do, our staff will have access to Rita software, and we'll go right into their software to, to update the, the information. We can accept the payments. There's, so there's, it's really a, an enhancement of services that we're going to now be able to provide. And then also use Rita's services and their enhancements to go get some of those taxes that we haven't been able to collect or are very laborious for us to track down.
You mentioned that space, tracking down and having Rita work with us on that. We're not giving up, or are we giving up control of who's the, the last sayer of truth for what's owed? Right, so this isn't that we're giving up our tax and authority or decision-making to Rita. They're just a tool that we can use to be more efficient and provide more services at a lower cost. But we still have the final word. If there's a discrepancy, say with the data that was entered, Rita's not going to go chasing after people unless we've approved that first.
Correct. We still have the ability to amend our tax code. We, we have the ability as well to, for any border revisions, people can come in for, for appeals. We still maintain that as well, that appeal process. So there's, again, a lot of everything stays the exact same. It's just a different software that we're putting the data into.
Thank you for that clarification. Mr. Gleaves?
Thank you, Mr. President. Great presentation. Thank you for coming down. I have no problem with this service. I think it's a good idea. But my concern is, do you have any additional outreach for elderly people who might want to use this service but aren't inclined to be online savvy?
As far as like taxpayer assistance, they can call in. It's our customer service line, and our customer service auditors will, you know, assist them. Really, and it depends on with your, with the elderly. If they do not have any W-2-type income, no, you know, except lottery winnings, things like that, they would be exempt from filing. So we would send out welcome letters on behalf of the city. And within that welcome letter, there's an extension on there, or I'm sorry, it lets them know how to file the extension. And if they're retired, then we would file that extension for them, and they wouldn't hear from us again unless, again, they hit the lottery or, you know, something like that, or got W-2 income, and it pings in our system with that.
Okay, thank you. How many employees does Rita have?
We have approximately 250 employees.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick question on the, your data center. Is it a central location, or are you server-upped and out?
It's located in our Brexville office, which is our main office. So it is in-house. In all of our systems, our software is specific to us.
Any other questions from council or administration? Again, thank you for coming down and sharing the information with us. I, I'm sure that if council, if you have questions between now and then, because there was a lot of information that we didn't go over tonight that was in your packets, including the spreadsheet and the wider presentation, we'll still funnel those questions, do it administration as a central point of contact, and then get the answers back, if that's all right, Mr. Yule and Mayor Hawkins? Okay, so if you have questions about this, after you've thought about it, send questions that way. And again, this was the first reading, so we will see this again at our next meeting. Thank you for coming down.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yep, and you're welcome to stick around for the rest of our ordinances, but we won't be offended if you leave. All right. Moving on to ordinance number 312025. This does have the emergency clause. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready?
Ordinance number 312025. An ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into a natural gas aggregation agreement with AEP Energy Incorporated and declaring an emergency. Whereas the Ohio General Assembly enacted natural gas deregulation legislation, which authorized the legislative authorities of municipal corporations to aggregate the retail natural, natural gas loads located in the respective jurisdictions and to enter into service agreements to facilitate for those loads the purchase and sale of natural gas. And whereas the city of Springdale, the city, with approval of the voters, established an opt-out natural gas aggregation program in order to provide negotiated rates to the city's businesses and residents. And whereas the city successfully completed and submitted to the state of Ohio all required paperwork for a competitive natural gas service provider to provide governmental aggregation services within the state of Ohio. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section 1, that the mayor and city administrator hereby authorized and directed to enter into a government aggregation master retail natural gas supply agreement with AEP Energy Incorporated to supply the city's natural gas aggregation program. Section 2, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which result in informal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code. Section 3, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law. Section 4, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of public peace, health, safety, and general welfare, and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the Charter, be effective immediately. The reason for the emergency is to lock in the best gas rate available for the city at the earliest possible date.
Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 312025. It does have the emergency clause and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Move to adopt.
Second. Moved in second. Questions or discussion? I just have one question. So this is the master service agreement, but we don't have the actual rate that we'd be locking in. This is to enable you to select that, or is the rate included?
Correct. The, the rate that we, this is a moving target. That's why we have the emergency clause with it. This rolls around about every year. Right now, we're looking at about 60.6499 for cubic foot of gas is what we're looking at. I think we had a, see, last year, we were locked in at 5894, and then it was lowered back in June to 5024, when Duke shifted some costs. So that, your memorandum there from Energy Alliance is kind of explains a little bit of that rate fluctuation. But locking into this does provide stability for our gas rates. But they provided that rate to over 30 other communities. I believe AEP is going to honor that for us as well. I think we're one of the last ones in on this one.
Ed, what was the rate, did you think?
.6499.
It's interesting, because I was going to share with you that Springfield Township just announced earlier today they had locked in with AEP as well, and that was the rate that they had, they had advertised to their community. So that was going to be your target, if you couldn't do better?
Gotcha.
All right. Any other questions or discussion? I'd say none as far as if you poll council?
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myscub?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 312025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next up on the agenda, we have ordinance number 322025. It also has the emergency clause. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready?
Ordinance number 322025. An ordinance reducing and recertifying special assessments levied for the purpose of constructing certain improvements and declaring an emergency. Whereas pursuant to a petition dated July 27, 2006, and filed by the owners of the benefited properties, the petition, council of the city of Springdale, council adopted resolution number 11-2006 on August 2, 2006, declaring the necessity of acquiring and constructing the improvements described in such resolution, and has adopted the assessments with respect to such improvements prepared and filed with the clerk of council and by ordinance number 41-22006, adopted on August 2, 2006, determined to proceed with said improvements. And whereas, in accordance with the petition, the improvements identified in such resolution number 11-2006 and ordinance number 41-2006 collectively, the improvements have been acquired and constructed on behalf of the city of Springdale, the city, and in cooperation with the Port of Greater Cincinnati Development Authority, the Port Authority. And whereas pursuant to chapter 727 of the Ohio Revised Code, the city authorized the assessments be levied and collected for the improvements. And whereas by the adoption of ordinance number 42, 2006, on August 2, 2006, council levied special assessments against benefited properties and certified those assessments to the Hamilton County Auditor for collection. And whereas, the tax increment and specialist assessment financing cooperative agreement entered into by and among the city, the property owners and the Port Authority, the cooperative agreement dated October 1, 2006, requires the assessments be reduced in accordance with the cooperative agreement, which includes reductions for the amount of service payments in lieu of taxes collected pursuant to section 5709.42 of the Ohio Revised Code and other available funds. And whereas, the city has received the report of the administrator as defining the cooperative agreement detailing the amount of service payments agreement detailing the amount of service payments in lieu of taxes and other funds to be available during 2025 and 2026 for the purpose of making debt service payments and indicating the amount by which the special assessments to be collected should be reduced for the 2026 collection year. And whereas, this council determines that the assessments previously levied and certified to the county auditor for the 2026 collection year should be reduced and recertified in accordance with the administrative report. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the assessments of the cost and expense of the improvements plus administrative expenses, which were previously certified for the 2026 collection year by council, to the Hamilton County Auditor's Office for parcel numbers and in amounts as set forth in the attached exhibit A, which is incorporated here and by reference, shall be reduced and recertified to the Hamilton County Auditor and shall be leveled and levied and collected for collection year 2026 in the amounts set forth in the attached exhibits B and C, which document the special assessment activity from 2007 to 2026 and is included for informational purposes only. Section two, the clerk of council is hereby directed to deliver a certified copy of this ordinance to the county auditor within 15 days after its adoption and honor before September 8, 2025. Section three, that it is found and determined that all formal actions of this council concerning and relating to the adoption of this ordinance were adopted in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio revised code. Section four, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law. Section five, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the charter, be effective immediately. The reason for said declaration of emergency is the need to reduce the assessments at the earliest possible date consistent with the schedule agreed to by the city.
Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 322025. It does have the emergency clause and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? All right, see none, Ms. Brownfield, if you poll council.
Mrs. Salvo-Myscub?
Aye.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 322025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, moving on. Next, we have ordinance number 332025. This also has the emergency clause. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 322025, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended agreement with Enable Injections Incorporated related to a job retention and creation incentive agreement and declaring an emergency. Whereas Enable Injections Incorporated requested assistance from the city of Springdale, the city, in the form of an incentive to encourage job retention and creation. And whereas the city provided the requested local incentive pursuant to the terms of a forgivable line of credit provided for in the agreement between Enable Injections Incorporated and the city, the agreement. And whereas, in order to accommodate Enable Injections Incorporated timetable for commencing operations, the city seeks to enter into an amended agreement. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the mayor is hereby authorized to enter into an amended agreement with Enable Injections Incorporated related to local job retention and creation that extends the deadline for the company to commence operations in the city, the amended agreement. A copy of the amended agreement is attached as exhibit A and incorporated here and by reference. Section two, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby authorized to make payments to Enable Injections Incorporated pursuant to the terms of the amended agreement. Section three, council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio revised code. Section four, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the charter, be effective immediately. The reason for said declaration of emergency is the need to execute the amended agreement so the city can extend deadlines and see benefits from its terms at the earliest possible date. Section five, this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 332025. It does have the emergency clause and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just by way of a little more background as well, administration met with Enable Injections a couple of weeks ago. They, as you know, they are occupying half of building one up at Springdale Commerce Park. They've done some interior renovations, created some office space and an IT area, and just recently submitted more permits for warehousing. So they did not commence their operation as stated in the former agreement, which they had 18 months when we initially agreed. So that would have put them around the August 8 mark to commence operations, otherwise we could do a clawback of that TIF money that we had pledged. So we spoke with them and there were a couple of things that were far out of their control with the FDA on how they get regulated, but they have a very, very, very promising outlook by way of their business and they will be making more than, they'll be essentially tripling what they're currently producing now in the next 24 months. So they told us, believe us, like we need the space yesterday and they're doing everything within their power to get warehousing in there so that they can get finished devices from their Evendale plant to the Springdale plant, but then also move in the additional biotech equipment. I guess the FDA regulation, the process of inspections can take up to two years. So there's a lot involved, a lot on the backend. There were some things that they were hoping for optimistically that would kind of trickle down a lot sooner to allow them to begin some of that interior renovation that needs to take place, but they said they're at capacity at their current site and they said, trust us, we wish we could be in there today. They've taken several of their investors up there to kind of show them the site, walk through the plan and whatnot, and they want to be up here sooner than later. So we're going to give them additional 12 months to start their operations up here.
And does this slide the backend of the agreement as well by 12 months or does it keep the same end date?
That all stays the same. The only thing that they just have to start their operation within 12 months. So everything else that you see within their incentive agreement stays as is right now. We're only amending that one section.
Perfect. Any other questions? See none, Ms. Brownfield, poll council.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myscub?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Thank you. Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 332025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we'll move on to ordinance number 342025. This also has the emergency clause. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Ordinance number 342025, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Husack Paving and Excavating Incorporated for the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project and declaring an emergency. Whereas the city of Springdale, the city, has identified the need to make improvements to the streets in the Springdale Industrial Park. And whereas the city advertised for bids for the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project, the project, and whereas sealed bids were opened on August 14, 2025, and the city has reviewed the bids and determined the best and lowest bid was submitted by Husack Paving and Excavating Incorporated for the base bid in the amount of $582,338. Now therefore be it ordained by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the city of Springdale City Council, the council finds the bid submitted by Husack Paving and Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $582,338 to be the best and lowest bid submitted for the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project. Section two, that the mayor and city administrator hereby authorized to enter into an agreement with Husack Paving and Excavating Incorporated in the amount of $582,338 for the project. Section three, that the finance officer tax commissioner is hereby authorized to pay Husack Paving and Excavating Incorporated a sum not to exceed $582,338 for the project. Section four, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio revised code. Section five, that this ordinance shall take effect on the earliest date allowed by law. Section six, that this ordinance shall be an emergency measure necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, and general welfare and shall, subject to the terms of Article 2D, 3D of the charter, be effective immediately. The reason for said declaration of emergency is the need to execute the agreement immediately in order to complete the work in a timely manner for the prices quoted and maintain the project timeline.
Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance number 342025. It does have the emergency clause and can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? All right, see none, Ms. Brownfield, if you poll council.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myscub?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Ordinance number 342025 passes with seven affirmative votes. All right, next we'll move on to resolution R142025. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Resolution number R142025, resolution declaring the necessity of improving driveway aprons in the public right-of-way as part of the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project and authorizing the assessment of the cost for the improvements on certain lots and parcels of property. Whereas as part of the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project, the project, numerous driveway aprons located in the public right-of-way have been identified in disrepair and in need of improvement in order to reduce hazards and to prevent the accelerating deterioration which will take place. And whereas, the city of Springdale has completed a survey of the driveway aprons and prepared plans, specifications, profiles, and estimates of cost for the proposed improvements related to the project. And whereas the plans, specifications, profiles, and estimates of cost have been on file with the clerk of council and have been considered by council of the city of Springdale. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that it is hereby determined by the council of the city of Springdale, council, that it is necessary as part of the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project to improve certain driveway aprons located on the lots and parcels of property identified and listed in the attached exhibit A, which is incorporated here and by reference. Section two, that the plans, profiles, specifications, and estimates of cost for the driveway apron improvements prepared by the city staff, which were placed on file in the office of clerk of council, be and are hereby approved. Section three, that the entire cost of the improvements to the driveway aprons, less the administrative costs, engineering costs, and legal fees, all of which shall not be less than 2% of the total cost of the improvements, shall be assessed upon the lots and parcels of property listed in the attached exhibit A, which lots and parcels are hereby determined to be specifically benefited by the improvements, and the assessments for the cost shall be levied in proportion to the benefits that may result from the improvements and shall be paid when levied in a single annual installment. Section four, that the city staff be and is hereby authorized and directed to prepare an estimated assessment of the cost of the driveway apron improvements based on the estimate of the cost filed in the office of the clerk of council in accordance with the methods of assessment set forth in this resolution and showing thereon the amount of assessments against each lot and parcel of property to be assessed. The estimated assessment for the driveway apron improvements shall be filed in the office of the clerk of council and shall be available for public inspection. Section five, that upon the filing of the estimated assessments, the clerk of council is authorized and directed to cause notice of the passage of this resolution and of the filing of the estimated estimates. Notice shall be made to and be served upon the owners of all lots and parcels of property to be assessed by personal service or by mailing of a registered or certified letter containing the notice to the owner of the lots and parcels of property identified in the attached exhibit A. All such notices shall inform the owners of the lots and parcels of the property that if there is an objection to the tentative apportionment of the cost of the improvement of the property, they may file in writing with the clerk of council such objection, but no later than 21 days from the service of the notice. Section six, the council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this legislation were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio revised code. Section seven, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of resolution R142025. As a financial resolution, we can act on it tonight. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? See none, Ms. Brownfield, if you poll council.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myscub?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R142025 passes with seven affirmative votes. And then finally, we have resolution R152025. Mr. Jacobs, when you're ready.
Resolution number R152025, a resolution authorizing the filing of continuing disclosures related to the March 2017 street improvement bonds. Whereas as part of issuance of the 8,200,000 of street improvement bonds in March of 2017, the city of Springdale has a continuing disclosure requirement under the Securities and Exchange Commission Rule 15C2-12, the rule. And whereas the rule requires that certain disclosures be made annually to the municipal securities rulemaking board under the electronic municipal market access system, EMA. And whereas the filing required to EMA is an update to certain information tables that were originally included as part of the official statement document from the bond issue and must be made to EMA by September 1, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the council of the city of Springdale, Ohio, members elected thereto concurring. Section one, that the council of the city of Springdale, council, has reviewed the annual information filing for fiscal year 2024 as set forth in exhibit A attached heretofore and incorporated herein by reference and hereby authorizes the city to file the required annual continuing disclosure with the electronic municipal market access system related to the 2017 street improvement bonds. Section two, that this council hereby finds and determines that all formal actions relative to the passage of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this council and that all deliberations of this council and if its committees, if any, which resulted in formal action, were taken in meetings open to the public in full compliance with applicable legal requirements, including section 121.22 of the Ohio revised code. Section three, that this resolution shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest period allowed by law.
Council, you've heard the reading of resolution R152025. It can be acted on tonight. What is your pleasure?
Moved to adopt.
Second.
Moved in second. Questions or discussion? Have we warned everyone out? Ms. Brownfield, poll council.
Mr. Vanover?
Aye.
Mrs. Salvo-Myscub?
Aye.
Mr. Jacobs?
Aye.
Ms. McFarland?
Aye.
Mrs. Webster?
Aye.
Mr. Gleaves?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye. Resolution R152025 passes with seven affirmative votes. That brings us to the end of ordinances and resolutions. Next, we'll move on to old business. Is there any old business anyone on council or administration would like to bring forward this evening? Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of items from quite a bit in the past. The first one, more recently, at our last meeting, it was discussed that there was concerns about the Hooters property and people parking there and spending a lot of time there as well as trash. I want to know if we had a follow-up on that and if things are going well. I did notice that they no longer have the lights on, which could have been confusing to people that were maybe going up to the business thinking it was still open, but I didn't know if we still had reports of problems on that property.
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll follow up with the building department, but in our discussions, it hasn't come up[1589.61] I'll follow up with the Building Department, but in our discussions, it hasn't come up of late. I don't know if anyone who drives by maybe has seen something, but I do know there was a conversation that they had with the property owner, but I can follow up to find out what is going on. I do know they had, one of the cases was going to mayor's court that was already in the pipeline prior to them closing, but I'll get an updated status on where things stand.
And then I think, Mr. Gleaves, did you have, was there a comment related to the Hooters?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs, for bringing that up. I have noticed, that's in my neighborhood, a larger police presence in that parking lot. They have been doing a good job monitoring things. The grass has just been cut. It seems like it's in good order as of now, so that's what I've seen. Thank you.
Mr. Jacobs, did you have another item?
Yeah, the second one was from quite a while's back, and it's just, I wanted to follow up. We had some residents talking about crumbling sidewalks in District 4, and it's been quite a while. Have we had some repairs made to those sidewalks?
Mr. Yule?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm not sure exactly what, we do do a sidewalk maintenance program every year. I can find out which sidewalks specifically were done. I know there was some done in Heritage Hill this year, but I'll find out what that list was and let you know.
Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I can tell you that there are a number of sidewalks primarily they focused on, unlevel, uneven, and they were ground off. I've had actually reported to Mr. Yule a couple others that got missed, and they have since been taken care of. But that is essentially what the sidewalk repair program was.
All right. Any other old business? All right, seen none? We'll move on. Next up, we have new business. There was one item that was on the agenda, so people could be prepared for the discussion. That was the item was second annual town hall Q and A meeting. After last year's town hall, we had discussed as a council that we wanted to have it as an annual event, and there was some discussion that needed to happen inside of council. In order for us to have a meeting scheduled that close to the coming election, it would take a action by council as a whole. So I wanted to introduce the topic and give council an opportunity to discuss it if they had feelings on whether we should keep it as a second annual meeting or because of the election upcoming, recognize that that is something that our ordinances do also speak to, and it would require action by council in order to have. So Mayor Hawkins, did you have some comments on that first?
Thank you, Mr. President. So I did want to restate for council, and I sent an email out last week. I know some people saw it, some people didn't. I had some discussion with some people that had not seen it, but so publicly, it's clear. I know I initiated this last year. We did it, most council members and elected officials participated in it, and we had scheduled one this year for September the 10th, and only through some oversight in terms of dates that it fell within the 75-day window that ordinance number 30.053 talks about in terms of pre-election meetings and mailings. And so I'd sent a message out to, an email out to all of the council members saying, hey, look, it's my intention to vacate or not participate in that town hall meeting based on the issue that we have in terms of the scheduling of it, being inside the 75 days. Had spoken with Mr. Braun, and I forwarded everyone Mr. Braun's legal opinion with regard to it. Mr. Anderson is correct. If council chose to go and do something, council could. I personally do think, as I said in the email, it's really important that the election process is fair and it feels fair to everybody, whether it's an incumbent or it's someone who's not in office, who's running. And, you know, it can go both ways in terms of the impact. I think you initially look at it and go, well, if you're an incumbent and you're having a town hall meeting, it probably favors you. But there's also instances where you can be on the spot and some things can work against you as well. So it's my position that I withdrew, we took that off the website and all those things. So obviously, council can do whatever council wants to do, but administratively, and as far as the mayor, I'm stepping back from doing that. And, you know, going back to the reason why we had it and I wanted to do in the first place was, timing-wise, it's right before, you get into August, September, you're right before we get heavy into budgeting. Our directors are already working through that as they round out the third quarter, getting into the fourth quarter. We started a new process with Mr. Yule and Ms. Morgan where they're going through quarterly meeting with department heads and seeing where they are with regard to their budget and spending, so that there's a conscientious monitoring of that throughout the year. And when you get to around August, September, they're really meeting internally in their departments and going through, what do we need, forecasting, and they're starting that preparation, but then it's going to go through administration, eventually it's going to come through finance, and then will come through council. So that's part of the idea of doing that. Obviously, it's not something that we've had to do in the past. I've been on finance for a number of years. When I was on council, we were able to figure out what people were interested in and they need, and it's been pointed out, I think Mr. Vanover indicated, folks can, they get opportunities to come in and speak if they want to. So no one's being silenced, and obviously, you can always call in to your elected officials if you have things that you want to have consideration of. But that's the reason why council, I sent the email asking to vacate that, that's the reason. Publicly, if someone's wondering, hey, what happened to the town hall meeting for September 10th? That's the reason why. We've got an ordinance going back a number of years. The last time it was looked at, I was on a committee, was 2011, but it was on the books before that, and we just tweaked it some back in 2011. So the idea for it is to make sure that no one's getting an unfair advantage or disadvantage in the election process. Thank you.
And thank you, Mayor Hawkins, for explaining the background on that. The 75 days, if you look at the calendar, actually takes Springdale back basically to the last day that someone could file to run for the election. That's where that number came from. I can tell, just to share publicly, when Administration, Mayor Hawkins, and I were talking about scheduling again based on our discussions in the last meeting, not even once did it come up, the closeness to the election, we were focused primarily on how do we split the time between the state-of-the-city meeting and then the budget process. And then we picked the date that was in between council meetings. It's just an opportunity for residents to come and ask questions. I certainly share Mayor Hawkins' belief that even if, you know, people can come and ask questions anytime, and we welcome that at every council meeting, they can also reach out to members anytime. This was just a way to give a less formal setting. In our last meeting, when we had this a year ago, it was well attended and well received. We received very positive feedback. I do share Mayor Hawkins' concern, once it was brought up, and I appreciate the way the mayor shared that with everyone on council. As soon as that concern was brought up, it made sense to me. It hadn't even been something that we had discussed. Those are all done over email. Anyone could see that. It was completely above board, and there were no intentions of trying to influence the election. But being sensitive to that, I also share that concern, that we don't want to present ourselves that way. And there's an ordinance for a reason. To be clear, though, the ordinance does allow council to override that prohibition, which is why I wanted to put it on the agenda. I did not add it to the agenda because I have a specific reason that I want it or don't want it, but because we had said publicly we would have the meeting, I thought it was worthwhile to have at least a discussion here on council. So if anyone on council felt strongly that we should have it, we could understand that as a group and make a decision. So it's not a decision made just by the mayor or made just by the president of council. So with that background, there's a couple lights of people that want to share their thoughts. I think, Ms. McFarland?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to ask, if we do not have it, will there be another one scheduled for after the election? And I ask that because of the feedback that we had. People really enjoyed coming out for that. I think they would be sad to see it go away, for lack of a better word. I think they just really liked seeing us all there in that, like you said, informal setting.
So at least from my side, and then I'll ask Mayor Hawkins his views, is council can make that decision if we want. This was a project that was an idea that Mayor Hawkins had brought forward when he started his administration. It's just another opportunity to raise things, and council was supporting that. I know we all get plenty of phone calls. People know how to find us. But as Mayor Hawkins pointed out to me when we were talking about scheduling, because I was saying, hey, we just redid this nice room, why don't we use it? We have a nice TV, we can show pictures, do presentations. But then it started feeling more like the town, or the state-of-the-city again, or council meeting. So he really was focused on and helped me understand the informal setting was important to some people, because sometimes these meetings can be intimidating, right? Because you're coming to a podium in a well. So we don't have to make that decision tonight. We can decide that, or people can think about it. If we want to reschedule it, we can call a scheduled meeting anytime. I just want to make sure that Administration would be there, because I think if it was just council members, I don't think it's quite the same. The way that we had the interactions were very beneficial because we got all those views in real time. I also wonder about the utility of having it later. It was time to be able to influence the budget if needed, and if we do it after the election, two of the concerns I have is, some of the members that would be there answering questions may not be the ones implementing that next budget. So how do you handle that? So we'd have to think about, would you take the elected, the elect council members to be there as well? So maybe we might need to wait and see how the election shakes out, is a thought. Mayor Hawkins, did you have something else on that before I come back to these two?
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with that. I mean, if it's after the election and people just want to have that, it's fine, but there really was a purpose with regard to the timing of it, with regard to the budget. So I'm open to some more discussion once we get past, in the first Tuesday in November, but the timing was purposeful.
Ms. Webster?
Thank you. The issue here is not the matter of having the town hall. The issue here is the date, the chosen date that Mr. Hawkins, Mayor Hawkins, has decided to have it. There's no reason why this town hall could not be put off until November the 12th, 2025, not in that period of the 75 days. I've had a couple discussions with him, Mayor Hawkins, and he has assured me he is not going to bring it up anymore before the election, and that's fine with me. Thank you.
Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Mr. President. As one of two people sitting up here that voted on that 411 resolution, or endorsement, or ordinance, it was done to level the playing field. And I can speak directly as an incumbent that is being challenged. I find the thought of having the meeting appalling. I am not willing to look my challenger in the eyes and say, I deserve an unfair advantage. That's not, that's why this was put in place. We have had, since it was tweaked, we've had 14 elections, seven, our 14 years, seven election cycles. This has never been a problem during those cycles. There were three sitting presidents, council presidents, that were present through that. No problems there. You know, as Mr. Hawkins said, and I had said to him, twice in each one of our meetings, we have a town hall, if you want to call it that, communications from the audience. They can address any topic they want to bring up. Everyone sitting up here, except Mr. Jacobs, has been challenged. So we have all been in the challenger's position. I know what it's like. I've been there, done that, and even now, I am not willing to say, you don't deserve a fair chance. So I think that it's best that it passes away. If you want to have a meeting after the election process has worked, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. But I can guarantee you, if you do, I will not participate. I will not be a hypocrite and say, I voted, put this in place, and then I'm going to go back on my word. That's it.
All right. So if I have heard a lot of challenges against that, that we're just sharing information at this point. Mr. Gleaves?
Thank you, Mr. President. I personally don't like changing it. I trust the residents know what this is all about, and Mr. Vanover, you mentioned the communications from the audience. I don't really think that there is any need to change communications from the audience because of an unfair advantage or anything like that, but I, the town hall was well-received. People like the communication being greater than it was before. So I understand your sentiments, but I don't think there's any reason to change it.
It would be fantastic if we'd done it before, we notified the residents that we were going to have it. So there will definitely be residents who are upset. We can postpone. We could move forward as is. When I first read the email, I was wondering if we could find a middle ground somehow where officials on the ballot, contested or otherwise, didn't attend, but then we don't have a quorum, so we can't do that. I wondered if we could have elected officials on the ballot be there but not speak as a way to try to maintain the spirit of it. But I do understand the opposition. I will say, no matter what, I am in favor of town halls annually, and I think we can get ahead of this next cycle and schedule it earlier, you know, outside of the 75-day window. But I sure wish we could find a middle ground where residents don't lose that opportunity. I don't have a creative one, like I said. I mean, if it made a difference for me to sit in the back row with sunglasses and a hat on and not say a word, I would do that to keep, because we did put it out there for residents as an event, and now we're taking it away in a sense, if we don't move forward in some way. I don't have any other creative ideas than those, to be honest.
Mayor Hawkins?
Thank you, Mr. President. And, Mr. Jacobs, it's a great event, great opportunity. The issue in terms of, you know, this is part of the reason why I asked for Mr. Braun's legal opinion on it, because I thought, you know, you could have possibility where you don't have folks that are up and running, engaged in it. But the way the legislation reads is it's any elected official, and the only way that that would be overcome is if council by a majority voted to go do something. And so, again, from my standpoint, being the initiator of it before, and again, there's no, you don't have to have a quorum. I have the ideas, and I want to invite council to have the opportunity to participate in this kind of thing. I'm pulling back on that with regard to this, just because of the timing of it. And we'll make sure in the future, we get to the years to come, that we'll be well in advance of that, and maybe we're looking at, you know, the first week of August or what have you, to make sure it's, there's no issue, and we've still got the inertia going for budgeting. But the takeaway for what's gained and lost, it's really important that anybody that's running feels like they're getting a fair shake. Obviously, everybody who's up here knows what it is, because you guys have all, we've all run and been elected, but it's important that that process is fair and appears fair. And so we go through this, and we always can do something in the future.
And for what it's worth, I agree with that. I think maybe we should look at, maybe using some of our summer schedule for maybe the town halls a regular basis, right? So that, maybe that last date that council has as a summer meeting date becomes a town hall instead, so that it's not this rush at the end to find the right date. I think there's solutions there for it. I think this was just an oversight. Again, when we talked about scheduling, it was never a concern about the election. We didn't count the days to the election, and that was an oversight, and I'm glad that Mayor Hawkins brought that forward to us so we could address it. I do see how people could feel like they were having something taken away. I hope people don't see that. I hope people know that they can ask us questions. It is not get that informal setting. But without the enthusiastic support of Administration in a meeting like that, it really just sets us up for just more fracture and division, and I don't see the benefit to the city for that. So I would struggle with trying to push through a town hall like that if everyone on the dais wasn't an enthusiastic supporter. I think it's a disservice to the residents at that point, because even if you could force the date, it doesn't mean that you're able to have those open and honest communications with them, and I think that's so important for the town hall, right? So, you know, you hear some of the concerns, whether we share them or not, whether, you know, we believe the residents could understand or see that differently. The fact that there is a part of the population that feels that way, I think we need to respect that too, knowing that the ordinance was there before we set up the town hall last year and set it. So I, to me, it's a lesson learned. Now, if we want to have one later, we should, we can do that, but I feel like it's probably in the city's best interest if we didn't try to do more than what we're doing now. That's where I'm sitting. There's a couple lights I didn't mean to jump in front of when I started talking, I didn't see them. Mr. Gleaves, did you have some thoughts?
Thank you, Mr. President. I didn't know if Mr. Braun would like to expound on this a little bit more to get some clarity of why this ordinance came about and the reason it can be overruled.
Well, we can go to Mr. Braun for a second, but just to be clear, we already have some of that information, and he can affirm, or he doesn't typically engage in the debate. But the ordinance is very clear in its language, that within 75 days, no council member should, or elected officials should call a special meeting. Some people might argue that this was an annual meeting that we talked about last time, but it's not part of our regular occurring. So the ordinance does allow for council to override that if it's in the public interest, right? And that's why we're having the discussion right now. So what that would look like is simply, after we're done with the discussion, I'll certainly give council an opportunity to make a motion if they want, and we can take a vote on it. I'm just cautioning that, that without enthusiastic support of Administration and certainly the majority of council, I feel like would be doing a disservice more than helping. But that's my view. I'm just one of those votes. Mr. Braun, did you want to add anything to that? I didn't want to preempt you, but I know you're not typically one to engage in the debate itself. Yeah, I'm not going to expound on my opinion because you all have a copy of it, but what I will say is, I was not here when that was passed, and I did not represent the city, and I don't know the legislative history of it. But I think, like you indicated, the language speaks for itself. There's a mechanism to go around it, and if you want to, it would take a vote of the full council.
Mr. Vanover?
Thank you, Mr. President. I can give you a little history lesson on it. It was drawn up originally because the possibility and potential, and there were some tries, that they would have a district meeting and, you know, be supported by the city when, you know, they're in an election cycle. That's not, that's an unfair advantage to the incumbent and to the challenger. So it's, it was basically rounding up and cutting off some less than, as I would say, honorable intentions. I think the electorate is, you know, well-versed, and they have the intelligence or will have the choice to make, and it should be up to them without any unfair influence from one side or the other. And quite honestly, if you had a meeting that we were all present, we have a quorum. And then, and Mr. Braun might, you know, jump on this, then we have some sunshine law issues, we have an official council meeting. I mean, the last town hall, they took minutes. I mean, the last town hall, they took minutes. So it was an official meeting. So this is, you know, every two years, we will face that because of the way our elections are. If they want to do it odd years, knock yourself out. You can do it and, and there's no repercussions to it. But being fair to all sides, that was why this was done, to take any advantage of being an incumbent, special advantage, I should say, that, you know, it's not, it's not fair and it's not right. So that's the history in a nutshell.
Mr. Jacobs.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to, like, in general, from last year's meeting, I know from my, my part, I was there to listen. I didn't do much talking at all. It is fundamentally different, I think, for the residents' experience than hitting that microphone with a three minute time limit. So I, I, I know that, I think the town hall is something worth keeping. I think, you know, making adjustments to avoid this, this problem in the future, I hope we're all on board. I just, I would hate to lose the town hall long-term over this because again, anybody was there, it was valuable for the residents and for, I think for the most part, it was about listening as opposed to talking. And so I hope we don't lose that in the shuffle. But it would obviously come up every two years. I just think we can, I wouldn't like to see it completely gotten rid of in an election year, for example. To me, that would be too big of a reaction here, but that's just from this chair. Thank you.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, Mr. Jacobs, I, I agree with you. The intention would not be to discontinue doing that in the future. It'd be my intention to, to see that take place again in August, could be July even. And the same thing, I mean, I, it's something that felt was important to give a informal opportunity for folks to speak with elected officials, but at the same time, and I said this last year, I don't, I don't want anybody on this dais to feel like they're on the spot or they have to be there. And, and it's been said, it's true. If you end up with four council members there, then it does become a quorum. It does have some different things. If I show up there and nobody from council goes, I'm, I'm going to that, then that's, that's fine too. But I thought it was a good opportunity for folks. Obviously, if we reach a quorum, then we got to do some different things. And we would always advertise it anyway for that, that purpose. But no, the intention would be that we'll do that again in the future. I will be more mindful with regard to dates. I'll own that. Doing some other things at the time, getting ready for pretzels to be given out and what have you. But we, I, I don't, I don't plan to do away with it in the future. I, I think it's something that's important. I think it's a great event and residents enjoyed, elected officials that were there enjoyed it. So we'll, we'll do it again. This is not a, a termination of that event in the future.
Ms. Sullivan-Wiseman.
Thank you, Ms. President. I've been very, very back and forth on this since I received the email. I've seen events through things that I've done, PTA, SYB, or even the city, where if you change a date or if you take it away, less people or no people will show up the next year. So I don't, I, I agree that it shouldn't be within the 75 days after hearing today. Some, some different viewpoints on why it should be, when it should be. But I do think that it needs to be either after the election date or it needs to be told to the people, we are going to be doing this. Because I don't want people to think like, oh, they're not doing it now. Because we did have a good turnout and it was a very positive thing. And so I, I hope that they do continue doing that. But yeah, I, I have to agree that if it's in, within that 75 days, it, it should be, the, the thing needs to be moved.
Ms. Webster.
Like I said in the very beginning of this discussion, it's not the matter of having a town hall and not keeping the residents informed. It's the timing based on the ordinance that was done in 2011. And I kind of think we've beaten a dead horse here and would like to move on to the end of the meeting. Thank you.
Any other discussion or questions on this one? All right, well, in fairness, as I said at the beginning of this item, the chair is open to motions after hearing the feedback. That is still anyone's option. If they would like to do that, this is your opportunity. All right, not seeing any lights. It seems like we had a good discussion there. I thank everyone for working through that. And again, I, I do feel very strongly, as Mr. Jacobs mentioned and Mayor Hawkins issued as well, we should have this as an ongoing event, be it over the summer schedule or just outside. I don't think every other year is the right answer, but I do want to make sure that we have that opportunity. I also was suspicious of the informal setting, as I said earlier, but it really did make a difference and people really were able to connect. So we can do better next time. All right. Any other new business anyone on council would like to bring forward or administration? All right, seeing none. Meetings and announcements. Ms. Sullivan-Wiseman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Planning will meet in these chambers on September 9th at 7:00 PM.
Mr. Gleaves.
Thank you, Mr. President. The BZA board will be meeting August 26th at 7:00 PM in these chambers.
Mayor Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. President. There's going to be a Ross Park renovation ribbon cutting on September the 8th at 4:00 PM. September the 8th at 4:00 PM.
Got it. And we also have a presentation, I think, at our next council meeting related to this as well. So that'll be in advance, so we'll get another reminder. Ms. Morgan.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Civil Service Commission will meet next on Thursday, September 4th, 2:00 PM, adjacent to these chambers.
Mr. Yule.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick announcement in regards to the, the Hooters property, just a quick update for everyone. Since all, since April of this year, we've had three complaints and the high grass has been resolved and is actively being monitored. The recreational vehicles parked on the, the lot and whatnot is being, continue to be monitored, but that is considered closed as well by our building department. Police Department, Building Department are still continuing to monitor that as well. The wall sign deterioration that was cited into mayor's court on August the 8th, so that is in process. So those are the, the three most recent updates regarding that property. The pavement management software, there are 30 pages of spreadsheets I would have to go through to dig all that out, but I will get some answers for you.
Fair enough. Still meetings and announcements. All right, seeing no more. We'll move on to communications from the audience. This is the second final opportunity this evening for anyone in the audience that would like to address council for any reason. Simply come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'd have up to five minutes to address council on any matter that you like. At this point, the floor is now open for communications from the audience. Second call. Third and final call. All right, I'm closing communications from the audience. Next, we'll move on to recap of legislative items and legislation still in development. Mr. Jacobs.
Council, as you review your legislative summary, item one, an ordinance amending section 73 dot 03 of the Springdale Code of Ordinances, regulating parking and declaring an emergency, was addressed by ordinance number 29, 2025, receiving a second reading and seven affirmative votes. Item two, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator into, into a natural gas aggregation agreement with AEP Energy Incorporated and declaring an emergency, was addressed by ordinance number 31, 2025, receiving seven affirmative votes. Item three, an ordinance reducing and recertifying special assessments levied for the purpose of constructing certain improvements and declaring an emergency, was addressed by ordinance number 32, 2025, receiving seven affirmative votes. Item four, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amended agreement with Enable Injections Incorporated, related to a job retention and creation incentive agreement and declaring an emergency, was addressed by ordinance 33, 2025, also receiving seven affirmative votes. Item five, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Husack Paving and Excavating Incorporated for the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project and declaring an emergency, was addressed by ordinance number 34, 2025, receiving seven affirmative votes. Item six, a resolution declaring the necessity of improving driveway aprons in the public right of way as part of the Springdale Industrial Park Concrete Repairs and Catch Basin Reconstruction Project and authorizing the assessment of the cost for the improvements on certain lots and parcels of property, was addressed by resolution number 14, 2025, receiving seven affirmative votes. Item seven, a resolution authorizing the filing of continuing disclosures with the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board related to the March 2017 street improvement bonds, was addressed by resolution number 15, 2025, also receiving seven affirmative votes. Items in development. Item eight, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with a regional council of governments for the purpose of administration and collection of municipal earnings tax in the city of Springdale, Ohio, was addressed by ordinance number 30, 2025, receiving a first reading, a presentation, and that will be back at our next meeting on September 3rd. Item nine, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute an agreement with the best bidder for the Springdale Community Center Phase II HVAC replacement project and declaring an emergency, will receive a first reading at our next meeting on September the 3rd. Item 10, an ordinance adopting supplemental appropriations and estimated receipts to adjust appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures and adjust estimated receipts for the city of Springdale, Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2025, will be on the agenda at our next meeting on September 3rd. Item 11, a res-, a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor, will receive a first reading at our next meeting on September the 3rd. And item 12, an ordinance accepting a bid and authorizing the mayor and city administrator to enter into an agreement with Rumke of Ohio Incorporated for Waste Collection and Recycling Service, will also receive a first reading at our next meeting. Finally, item 13, an ordinance authorizing the mayor and city administrator to execute an addendum to the current agreement between the city of Springdale and Swim Safe Pool Management, will be on our next meeting's agenda, receiving a first reading.
That's it, unless there's anything else from council or administration? You guys good? Good? All right, all that's left before us is item 16.
I'm adjourned.
We're adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for sticking with us. It was a long one today.